Pardon my allergies. This is the City of Avondale State's Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners. This is our regular meeting. It's November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's five thirty. About to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt. So Lionel, do I have a second? SD, I'll be able to say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner comments, stuff in there, Lionel.
Uh, you know, I, I don't really have anything. So I have a whole bunch of. Tree lighting. That was always a fun thing.
Yeah, I just had to second that the tree lighting was so great with the ballerinas and the children's fire. It just could have been more lovely except for the first.
Yes, I love wearing my all fat. Such a good one.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, second fat, but also wanted to say a great big thank you to all the volunteers who helped plant one of the rain gardens. On Tuesday morning in the very, very cold weather. So um, we still have two rain gardens, I believe, to be built. But they're getting there and um, really appreciate those folks' labor.
Yeah, only thing I got to add is I got to hang out with Santa um, for a while. Uh, we got to decorate a cart. I don't want to ruin it for anybody, but Santa lives off Lake Shore, which is pretty awesome. Um, but yeah, it was a, it was a, it was a great night. Loved adding the um, the sleigh and giving the opportunity for the kids to get their pictures made was fantastic. Alan, great job. Uh, on that, um, it's always, I, I, I say this every year, but they should erect a statue at some point in time. We should for Mark Green. I love when you have the children's fire out there singing um, well attended. I think it's just a fantastic event. It just keeps getting better every year. So thank you very much for that.
I have nothing to add. Uh, Christmas tree lighting was great. Get proud. Uh, say.
And the tree was bigger this year too, just a little.
It's growing.
It's growing.
It's growing.
Children, right?
It's growing.
Growing up with them. So um. I do want to light the holly tree though in the median next year. So. We can talk about that later, but I'd like to see that come back. Anyway, Mr. Andrew?
We can't do that. We can't light the holly tree. We, we could relight the other tree that is behind the uh, clock tower. But the holly tree is no longer safe to do that. Um, so we. For, for multiple reasons, but I think um, it's, yeah, we could always plant a new holly tree.
Yeah. The, the Christmas holly.
In our budget from this year, so.
Yep.
So yeah, that should be redesigned necessarily, just.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I have stuff.
Oh, yes, Mr. Andrew.
Yes, so we have a, a busy schedule in December, and I just kind of want to quickly run through that. Uh, this Saturday, the Lake Avondale tree lighting is at six P M. Uh, Sunday, the farmer's market is making its move to the market pavilion at the town green. Uh, and permanently relocating to that spot. Uh, our Hanukkah celebration and menorah lighting uh, at the town green will take place on Thursday, the seventh at five thirty. Uh, Saturday, the ninth, winter wonderland returns from noon to six P M. Sunday, the tenth, the Christmas tour of homes returns after a COVID pause. Um, and the holiday, uh, from three to eight in the holiday market will run from noon to six. And finally, uh, something very exciting, uh, we will be holding a groundbreaking uh, for the commercial development uh, in front of the town green. Um, tentatively known as the Dale uh, on Thursday, December the fourteenth at four thirty.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Okay. All right, our first order of business is very exciting. Um, need to confirm our new city clerk. Would you like to say words to Patrick?
Yes, so, so per city's charter, the appointment of the city clerk is my responsibility. However. Uh, in order for um, the city to take part in some legislative action, uh, that uh, appointment that has been made needs to be ratified by the B O M C. Uh, so we have a resolution before you tonight that will do just that. Um, but before, before y'all take that up, I would like to take a minute just to talk about um, our new city clerk, Karina Raina, uh, who is seated to our right. Uh, Karina comes to us from the city of Sandy Springs, where she served in the role of assistant city clerk. Um, prior to her uh, experience at the city of Sandy Springs, uh, Karina served as the deputy city clerk for the city of Dorival. Uh, she also was uh, an administrative assistant in their uh, parks and rec division um, prior to that. So a wealth of municipal experience, a wealth of experience um, as a certified clerk. Uh, we uh, very much welcome that experience and her expertise into the city clerk's role here. Um, and are excited for Karina to be a part of our team.
Yes.
Yeah.
So with that, we need to make it official. Uh, we have a force of resolution by the city of Avondale State to recognize and confirm the appointment of Karina Raina as city clerk. Uh, do have a motion to adopt. So that was Lionel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dee, uh, any other questions, comments up here? Nope. Any questions, comments out there? Well, online.
We are online.
No comments.
Okay. All right, seeing none, I'd like to bring you back for a vote. All of them say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um. Just want to get a pile. It's just a free. Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the two thousand and twenty-four operating budget and two thousand and four twenty-five capital program. Uh, again, it's first reading.
Interesting.
We're not voting on this tonight. We will be voting on this at the next regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Manager, anything to add?
Yes, uh, just, just for um, the board's reference, uh, an additional document was added uh, to uh, the draft budget, which um, was um. Legislated by resolution earlier in the year, uh, which is the incorporation of the annual fee schedule. As a part of the budget process. So you will see uh, that fee schedule incorporated uh, therein. Uh, so that uh, if approved, will become part of the annual budget.
Any questions, comments up here?
I have two questions. I'm you. Okay, so um, the first is, as um, in terms of the fee schedule. I know we have looked at it previously. Is it okay for me to ask, is, are there any changes to the fee schedule in those?
Right.
Since we talked.
No, uh, except for the fact that we took out the comparison charts with the other cities. Y'all had it strategic planning and consolidated that into our own form.
So there weren't any major changes to?
No, but we have added to just the fee schedule in general, not necessarily. Requiring approval by you guys as a part of the annual budget process, which was kind of limited to administrative fees. But we've put other fees in the schedule for reference, like park rental fees and stuff like that, recreation fees. Which aren't technically administrative fees. They're actually fees for usage. Um, so those are also included in that schedule.
Okay, so that's. Second question. Just wanted. So um, the first page, general fund revenue.
Yeah.
Um, the property tax current year. There's a line under there, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six. I'm assuming that's part of the property tax.
Yes.
Because when I looked back, it was, we added those two together.
General millage.
Okay.
The second would be the amount that would be um, I guess, assumed to be generated. If the S S D were created and a certain millage were applied to it.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause before, in the previous draft, that wasn't separated.
Correct.
So thank you for that in this.
And there's, there's also another revenue change uh, to, to the budget document. Um, after receiving more data, we have increased the um. Expected revenue generated from the motor vehicle tax by twenty thousand dollars. Um, and we, on the expenditure side, uh, we now have the um, exact debt service number. Uh, that we will be responsible for. So both of those things have been incorporated. Uh, which actually results in a minor increase to the amount of revenue that is anticipated to uh, be transferred to the capital.
Yeah, um. I hope I'm looking at the, at the right um. Version of this document on the stormwater fund. Uh. That's on, on the bottom, the total expenditures for twenty twenty-four or expected for twenty twenty-four. It's two hundred and seven thousand. Which is an increase uh, above the twenty twenty-three adopted, but then, but in the next column, it shows minus eighty-four point seven this month.
Yeah, that, that's just a typo, uh, probably reflecting, I would imagine, uh, the capital expenditure for stormwater that we made. Which we, we have um, taken out of here for the purposes of showing you what the operating budget in the stormwater fund would be, rather than the capital expenditure. Which we used to show as a line item within um. The budget itself.
Okay.
But we'll fix that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, again, this is first reading, so we will vote on this at the next regular meeting. Okay, next item. Um, a second. What's that? We're not voting on it? Oh wait. Um, all right, item number six. Uh, we have a force of resolution by the city of Avondale State to approve the grant. Of an underground easement at the property known as sixty-four North Avondale Road to Georgia Power Company. Don't have a motion to adopt. No? Well, I think we want to discuss it.
Yeah.
Questions? Well, we can still discuss it after we've made the motion. Okay, uh, I'll make the motion. That was, you get that?
Yeah.
Sorry. Ryan, Lionel. All right, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, so at the previous work session, we brought forward an item to you guys uh, that um. Would require granting an easement to Georgia Power to provide a mini substation on the property that will become the Dale. Uh, which is currently owned by us. Um, and so we. Um, i- if y'all recall at, during the work session, uh, we had not received the easement document quite yet from Georgia Power. Um, we pressed and pressed and pressed, and we were finally able to obtain the easement document today. Uh, you have before you that easement document. Uh, so the granting of said easement area uh, as listed in the um. Legal description in that easement document is what you are considering to.
The location is awful. Of the transformer? Yeah, it's like right in the middle of the. Help, explain the location. I think we're all a little concerned about. Please, you're, you're the smartest one.
I spent a lot of time with Georgia Power and with Kerry um, and, and Bill trying to evaluate where this goes. This is, so the location that we're talking about here, I mean that. You've got a four-sided building. You gotta, you, you got a four-sided building. So this is the side that's going to have most of your kind of utility type things that kind of service this building. And so. You, the option, I mean, you don't want to put it in, you don't want to put it in the, you don't want to put it in the, you don't want to put it on the park side, you know, in front of the park. So this is an area that we can better camouflage. It's, it's, this is on concrete. So it's a structure that's going to be, I, oh, I left my notes um, exactly the size. It's four feet, so this thing.
Yeah.
It's about that wide, twenty inches, twenty inches wide and about that, that, that wide.
There's already one existing.
Yeah.
It's kind of just beyond the pavilion where the undeveloped land is. There's one standing there already.
So this is, this is next to the, the whole other place.
That's, I guess, the concern for me, Shannon, I, I get that this has been a long, you know, it's right next to the tree box. So it doesn't look like it's on, it looks like it's on the public property, not.
It is on the public property, but it just has to be ten feet away.
Oh, they have to be ten feet. So that's why you can't put it on that little patch of grass right next to the building. Ah.
It has to be ten feet away.
Cause I'm looking at it going, why can't it go right there?
It must be, the nice thing is you have to have a, it, it sits on the concrete. So then you have to have a concrete pad. So if I moved it over to the grass, you have to build a six by six concrete pad. By putting it there, it just kind of blends in because it's already on concrete. They'll bore underneath to get to this pole.
They don't have to pull up any concrete.
No, I mean, the way they'll, it's, what's the way they will install this is they put, they place a pole at the end of that. This. You can look at the Georgia Power joint, but I find this hard.
Yeah, it says it's not the scale, so it's hard to look at it. This one, this one is, that, that was, that was the scale. Well, at least it's proportion.
But this has to, this pole has, the way the underground works is you have, um, you have the power source above ground. You have to connect somehow, or your undermount has to connect to your overhead. They have to pull it down a pole and then across to connect into the transformer to have all that power underground. Can't do that on one of the existing poles, because we already have three transformers on it, and they say it's not physically possible to do it. I'm given, I got fifteen reasons they told me. So, yes, I have to put a pole here. Now, we looked at three or four different options, because nobody likes, I mean, we, the other option was to put it on lake. But then we just took all the poles off of lakes. Now I put three poles back on lake to get it even, you know, to the backside of this. It just went round in circles. Now, this is an easement, so they're going to bore underneath to get it. So they've done, we did that in a parking lot over it. Behind Flanders papers and you'd never know. And, and we were success, they were successfully able to do this. However, you know, if something went wrong somewhere down the road, then if they couldn't fix it. Up through the conduit, then they have to dig it up and we could have a replacement issue, but that's what has to. I don't know how we do that. I talked to them about the likelihood of that, and they said. They've never seen it. They've never seen them out. They've never seen it happen when they have to do that. It wasn't going to be an issue. Sherry and I have gone around in circles about how to camouflage the box. And, and we think we can do, I don't want to see it. A lot of times these things disappear. We, we're not going to put greenery around them and some other things. I think we could probably paint it, but if we painted it, I think that actually brings more into it. So, you know, I've done some other things since um, I've done it a few times where I've camouflaged it with. Kind of a raft, it still gives Georgia Power their access. I mean, we can do that gracefully, but I just think it's, we need to see it. Let's see it and then decide what to do. Because it, it may really disappear. I mean, there are a lot of things out there already, and they do sort of, they do disappear.
So you and Sherry worked on this, and she's okay with the location? Nobody likes the location.
Many before they even got me. And I spent an hour or more on, on the Georgia Power, asking a bazillion questions to see if we could come up with anything. And this just was the best answer we could come up with. And we got to get power to the building. And you just have so many sides, you know, you don't want to put it, I don't think we want to put it on North Avondale, even if we, we now have a lot of, because I took those poles off.
We already have one on North Avondale. Every time I go by thermal pro property, I see it. Huge, it bugs me like crazy. Hate that thing.
There. I think what I can tell you is that.
It's the least bad option.
This is the easiest invasive option that we've been able to. And do you think, I said he's going to tell me that we need a utility plan? Um, I think that in general, we've been trying to push as many, you know, cleanups and push out as many of these poles. Particularly off of two seventy-eight, which is your, the main portal, and we'll continue to do things like that. Um. I wish I had a better answer for you. I'm looking for other places. Maybe I can lose poles uh, as we go through, but. Then I do have one, I think we might be able to lift, but it's going to need to be part of the two seventy-eighth project. And then we've got some more that are coming down eventually, but we need to redevelop that cycle till we can take those down. So some of this has to happen with redevelopment, and they are underground utilities. It's just that you got to pull it from someone.
So they'll install them, this concrete wire, and then it's very valuable.
No, they were, they're going to four hundred.
I don't really understand um, this drawing, this drawing. Is this the actual drawing?
No, well.
It's a different route.
Um.
You know what?
You are absolutely, you're correct, G P. Um, use this drawing. This is Georgia Powers. That was what Sherry hoped for originally, but that, that pole actually is moving this direction.
And so with this one, I see some cardboard dead wires. Um, yeah, I, so, I'm, I'm not understanding this drawing very well.
Okay, can you pull up that drawing for me at least? I forgot that this is, that Georgia Power, that Sherry didn't give me that one.
It's under the work session.
Uh, it's, it's in the dock. It stands the um, easement. So, D. So D, if you put that line, there's an existing pole. So what we're doing is we're taking an existing pole that's on Oak Street. Running, that's where the existing power is. We got to get to that pole. It's that three transformers. So what Sherry originally wanted to do, pull that off, off of um. Pull the power from that location. Georgia Powers said, no, you can't do it because there's exists, yeah, it's going to have to be a little different. You can't do that because there are three transformers on that existing pole. So then, so we're setting a new pole. It's crossed from skip space. He pulls the, the Georgia Power pulls the wires overhead from the existing pole, this new pole over the driveway, over the driveway. And then crosses over to underground with a, it goes underground with a bore to the green box, the green box and service the building.
And that looks like it's going through the two existing oak trees that we planted.
I do not believe that it is. I believe that it is. So. Well, it's not, I will, I will guarantee you, we will.
So the location here on this plan, is it the same location as here on this plan?
It is my understanding that the two green boxes are the same location, that that hasn't changed. What has changed is the location of, is needed for that initial.
It looks different because the one from the yellow plan uh, looks like it's offset, Ford skips from the corner of the pavilion by maybe ten or fifteen feet.
Yeah.
But it's not so scary.
That looks, obviously, you're. Or is this one, does it, at least? I think, I am, this is my performance.
So.
This one is the one that she said.
I will make sure that, that we avoid, this doesn't, this plan doesn't show the, the, the tree holes. And so we will add the tree wells and avoid them.
So there's no way to go from the transformer on Oak Street. The transformers, the three transformers to the new pole. There's no way to do that underground and put a box there instead of a pole. I mean, I am a little concerned about.
I guess I can ask whether we can, I can not have a pole, but we might be able to go underground from the. Pole.
I would hate.
The existing pole to a new.
Run into.
Might be able to do that.
But just the aesthetics of it, I.
I, I think it will come with a pretty, it will come at a price tag, if we can do it, and I can ask, but I'm. Yeah, I can ask. I, I cannot um. The point of, I, I, she, she would not, she couldn't let, she couldn't run down that. Couldn't run down it. So I, if I, she can't run down that pole in order to go across, she probably is not going to be able to run down that pole to cross to another. But like that.
And what is this red box here?
Oh, that's it. I think those are just showing you the existing conditions. They are the three, I think Lisa's probably right, the three existing conditions of the transformer.
Well, so, yes, you're right. I feel very, very strongly that we need a downtown total plan, otherwise every project. You have to, and it's going to be inconsistent, be surprised every, so. I think that's really important to be downtown.
What's the yellow line from the existing pole to an asterisk in the middle of nowhere? It's light?
As lights, the lights that go overheads.
Okay.
But, but that's in the middle of the plaza.
But I think that's, those are there. That must be the, where we have the lights, getting their lights.
There is a pole.
There's a pole there.
To take this over, sit with it. Uh, you can, you can sit with it, and I can answer questions, but I'm, but we do have to get power to this building. And I'm not sure what else I can, I can, I can move some things around and make sure that it happens. We can go over to Lake Street and have three poles there. There aren't good answers here.
How about an underground vault?
Can you please turn them off? I'm sorry. Um. An underground vault for, I mean, overheads, over the.
Where the transformer sits, dropping it.
And their transformer by, by. Immersive, is this what you're saying?
Yeah, you need, kind of. And that's a lot of cost, isn't that big?
Um.
Big insect in the public.
So where? Where is everybody right now, though?
I am, given what Shannon has just relayed to us and the difficulty. I am ready to vote on it with the understanding that she and Sherry will continue to explore whatever they can and is the best possible project. I don't see.
But I mean, once we move it in, it's gonna. Either.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, all y'all are doing here is granting Georgia Power access to property to make repairs and installations as necessary. But so technically, let's just say nothing changes, right? Then that authorization is already there. If something were to change, right? If the plan were to change and another easement area were necessary, we can bring that.
Well, my concern is, is once we, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, once we grant them an easement. They can figure out whatever they want to do because they have access to that property. We've given it to them.
You're, you're, yeah, so um, well, two things. One is that the easement is, like Patrick said, for them to install and maintain this.
Install and maintain this system. Once we grant it to them, it lasts forever. However, if. If the board is, will accept this, but prefers another option that we don't aware of yet. What I've heard from the staff is that this is a major time front, right? So what you could do is approve the easement, have the mayor sign it. And then simply have Shannon hold it while she works with Georgia Power to see if there's any other option. Y'all would be doing that under the understanding that if there is no other option, then we're gonna turn over the easement to them. And we won't have to come back and vote again. If there is another option, then this will come back to us.
I I really don't mean this snarky. Why can't Georgia Power do a scale drawing? I mean, seriously, it's it's Georgia Power. Why can you not give us a drawing that correctly portrays where everything is to scale? And what you're doing, I mean.
I mean, I can answer that. They certainly can do it. They would have to pay, to do it to scale. You gotta pay a surveyor. Yeah, I'm not saying they shouldn't, but that's, they're obviously trying.
I guess where I am is, I I understand, we've gotta get power to the building and ultimately, I feel like this is the best. This is, this is the best of the worst locations, to put it. What I, what I'm not comfortable with and what I don't feel like I could vote for tonight is granting an easement without looking at. I mean, you guys just got this today.
We have, we've been talking about for weeks and weeks and weeks. It's been.
We just got the official document. Nothing has changed from what we said, except for the the location of that pole.
I mean, I, but.
Sherry did that.
I know, that's a scale drawing that they can share with us. I mean, would everybody feel more comfortable if you knew exactly where this thing is going? I would too, because I think it's honestly, it's kind of ridiculous. So there I am being snarky. I mean, it's ridiculous that we cannot, I I would bribe, we're granting them an easement, we don't even know where it's gonna go, and I realize that it's. There are ways around that, but it's like, seriously.
Okay, so I can ask Sherry to to do, to update her and to be very specific. Georgia Power is non-negotiable. They are non-negotiable, and I need to be blunt about it, but they're non-negotiable. You don't get to negotiate with them. Take or leave it. And I think that we need to go into the building, so.
Well, no, that, that was questioning that. It's just. I mean, I know we're not, but I mean, we don't know, because this doesn't, this is a schematic drawing. This is just sort of.
That would be super helpful.
That's exactly what the legal description, everything we're giving in this one along with what they're gonna do. But this, but would this be binding? But the, what I'm concerned about is if we say, hey, if you go back to them and say, hey, this, we wanna know what it would cost to have. That on oath underground versus X, right? And if we agree to that or not, then. That's, that's in the easement document that we, we, because once you grant someone an easement, there is no going back. You've already done it. It's gone.
We, I mean, before we would do that. If we're, we will go back for the. Some additional matches and see what we can come back with. So we would not sign or send an easement until that's.
And I think we also need to be a little clear here, that an easement isn't granting them ownership of the property. It's just granting them the right to access the property, to work on their own. Equipment if they install the equipment on that site.
But we don't own it either. I mean, we can't do anything over that area because we've granted them an easement. So, I mean, they may not own title. But they have every right to use it however they so choose.
We can put our stuff on top of it, it's just. They have a right to use it to maintain their infrastructure. We could, i- and like the mayor said, if we put something on top of it, we do that at the risk of it being dug up. Now Shannon said that they have never dug one of these up, that doesn't mean it can't happen. It doesn't mean we can't put something on top of it. We just, if we do put it there, we have to do it with the knowledge that. There's this tiny chance that it'll get destroyed.
Yeah, so I'm not, I just, I need, I need for me. I can't vote, I can't vote yet. I mean, yes, we need power. Yes, I realize that Georgia Power is not going to send the host of negotiators out here to negotiate with us, but. I, for me, I need something more accurate specifically where it's gonna go, or I can.
But. Wouldn't you, wouldn't that, I mean, wouldn't you have the surveying to say that this is the space that they are allowed? Those say, there's no such description.
Well, it's gonna, so the thing is, that's a great point, and I think, or I'm pretty sure, or I'm very sure. The way it works is when they install it, then they do know exactly where it is. And the way the easement is written up is that it covers ten feet in either direction. So like, when they get out there, they'll decide exactly where they're gonna put it. And they'll have a record of that because they need to go back and find it. And then their easement area is ten feet on their side. But yeah, we're not, I mean, you know, that thing doesn't have a legal description.
Is it just for the transformer or is it the easement also for where the power, the underground power line is?
Yes, yeah, it's primarily for the underground.
Oh, yeah. Uh, why don't we, are you?
Well, I mean, it's so concerning to me now, knowing exactly, you know, where it it's. But, you know, on the other hand, yeah, we've got half hours. That part is a question. I'd like to be more specific about where it is, if possible.
And I wanna push back to Georgia Power to come up with some options and bring us to this. I know you've worked hard.
I mean, hours and hours and hours.
But as a commissioner, I feel like we need to have better options and forgive this here. And they need to be clearer towards maybe more specific. I'm willing to have a special call meeting, because I know time of the assets, if we can get that information from them quickly.
So, um, yeah, I would love to see. Exactly where it's going in terms of. And you have maybe then where those poles are. But again, um, um, so I would, I mean, I'm with everyone else. I would like to see more specifics.
Can I say one thing? Just ju- another point of clarification. We can create a diagram. We can't shift this easement area, though, unless Georgia Power agrees to it. So the easement area that Georgia Power has agreed to is set. Um, so that won't change. So the location isn't gonna change. Uh, and we won't know, we won't, like Stephen said, we won't be able to specifically know the location of the. Transformer box until they put it there. All we know is the general area on which they can work. And that can't change.
And they'll, they have to find. But I mean, they could come out here and put that box anywhere they want.
Well, no, they could only put the box in the easement area that you grant.
But it's not clearly defined. I mean, we're going around in circles here.
Sherry did on her. She she drew in the line, but then she drew the ten feet on either side. So if we would, I mean, that's what I'm hoping she could do with the transformer box area to, like, what is, what is the area that they could? You know, what is the possible places, place where she could, it could be, if that could be outlined. I think that would help us a lot to know, you know, yeah, in fact, there may be some wiggle room in that area of where they end up exactly putting. Generally, where would it be allowed?
I have that to, that, yeah. So what we can do is we go back and four or two things. Is it just, is there any way? To go to do Sherry's planning, come down off that transformer, off the the one pole, and. We'll try again. Uh, the other is, is what would, could they, and what would the cost be to come underground and up? A new pole at. Yeah, so we, I can ask that question, and I have one other question I can ask that would be down the road. Could I do it? Could I somehow or another connect in two seventy eight?
And I would also like to know what, what the premium is for putting it here.
They consider this untriplated.
The, and then, again, I don't, I I understand ten feet. That needs to be ten feet from the building. But it, is 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 this ten feet from the building? Is as close as we can get to the building? I think it's as close as we'd wanna.
Yeah, it's you. But we will, I mean, we're in agreement that we try to get it as close to the building as humanly possible.
And what is, is this? Is coming off the building?
That's a trash area? You're looking at the building.
Where?
I don't.
Those stairs? Where is it?
I don't know.
Yeah, so that's another thing I'd like to look at is whatever that is, what what happens if it's.
I I will, see, I'll look at it. I don't know, I'll still have in my head exactly what that is. I think it's part of the building and staircase, but I'm not far extended. Yes.
It's not the stairway going down in the park, is it? It's coming from the upper floor of the building down to that, right there, landing right here. So anyway. All right, we've already made the motion, so.
Can we defer for the action?
Well, I think at this moment, we should just bring it up again next time. Yep, that's the, that's it.
And perhaps that would help if there's any possibility of getting Georgia Power to. What we're asking.
Yeah, and and again, I'm perfectly willing to be able to get this information quickly, so I'm perfectly willing to do a special.
Two. Right. But. I mean.
Yeah, you guys can can handle this. Yeah, so what, I mean, I'll go back to see what we can do. I, I mean, I knew you wouldn't like it, we didn't want. But. We'll see what we can come up with. It's different and see if we can, I'll ask Sherry to go ahead and scale out something. That is, that is more.
I do want the board to understand that this wasn't fly by night. Shannon's probably spent twenty hours already on this one issue.
Just I fully appreciate.
Well, and I don't, I don't think that's, this is any fault of yours. I mean, this is, we don't have a clear idea of what's happening here, where it's gonna go, what, you know, and. I think that. They are fully capable of producing a scale drawing that clearly defines the area they might wanna put this in and so forth. I, I just, I'm not.
Well, also, we, I do want to try and get this back on an agenda as soon as possible because. No resolution here delays the project.
Well, but they, again, it doesn't, it's like groundbreaking, they're not putting up power immediately. We've, we've got some time, but I think it needs to be right. It needs to be accurate where we know exactly where it's still. That's, you know. Yeah, okay, so. We made the motion, any other comments, questions appear? Any out there? Any online?
No.
So spring back for vote, all of theirs say aye. Let's say aye, that's five, so let's bring it up again. Okay, uh, well, we. Okay. Uh, all right, that was it. Public comment. See, none do I have a motion to adjourn. So, it's a lot, hold on a second. Am I good? Continue? This is City of Avondale State's Georgia Board of Recommissions work session, it's February twenty nine, twenty two, three, it is six fourteen. By following the meeting's order, we have an agenda for us to have a motion to adopt. Steve, do I have a second? That was Lionel, all of us say aye. So. First item of business, a resolution by the City of Avondale State to re- wait a minute, that's the one.
Yep.
I'll just read the title, just for the record. A resolution by the, we're not voting on this. A resolution by the Board of uh Mayor Commissioners of the City of Avondale State is creating a special tax, special district to fund infrastructure improvements. Within the city's downtown business district to establish the boundaries of such special district. And to provide for the levy collection of taxes within said district, Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so. Our city attorney, Mr. Quinn, has prepared. Uh, a resolution that would be necessary for the creation of a special service district, if you so choose. If y'all recall from our previous discussion, uh, in order for that, uh, a, um. The millage to be levied, um, in that district in the twenty twenty four tax year. The district boundaries themselves have to be created by a resolution during the twenty twenty three calendar year. Uh, the levy, it's if you choose to create a district. Uh, the levy does not have to be, uh, generated or or. Decided upon until, uh, the si- the millage levy for general purposes, which is, uh, by July first. Of of the year in which that millage would be collected. The resolution is is organized so that there are, if created, there are blanks. In the resolution that you would essentially insert here, the millage rate upon the time when that levy would be decided. Uh, so that's how that would work. Uh, so this resolution, uh, that that Stephen did is, um, essentially. Uh, covering the, uh, the boundary that we showed to you, uh, via, uh, presentation last time. Uh, that boundary is inclusive of, um, all, uh, CBD properties. Um, on both the, uh, north side of two seventy eight. Uh, and then the south side of two seventy eight, uh, to Carl's Corner. Um, so, uh, I believe we still have that map. Marina, do you have that map?
It's the SSD map.
There it is, yep. Can you increase the size of that, please? As you can see on the screen, that is the proposed boundary of the special service district. Um, there. So if, if you determine that you would, um, like to move forward with the creation of such a district. Uh, this resolution, uh, with the attached boundary map, uh, would be used to to create it at the next regular meeting.
I have a question. Do you exclude residential properties?
Uh, no. We can't, we can't carve out.
Okay. Okay.
So Patrick, um, when we establish this disper- is that, is it established? On into, you know, infinitum, whatever, however you wanna say it, or is there sunset? The date that we have to reestablish?
Well, much like the tad, what you do, it it's, it's essentially, my understanding is that it is. Infinite, infinitum. But what, what we've proposed in the boundary of the language of the resolution. Is the anticipated generation of revenue over a certain period of time. And what that revenue would be generally used for. So for example, um, if you see in that draft language, in the, in the recitals, we, we try and define that.
So then that, it might be a good idea at some point in the future to do another. So then that, it might be a good idea at some point in the future to do another resolution, just stating that.
Sure. Well, for example, um, you know, this, this, this leaves in fill in the blanks for what we anticipate the revenue to be generating, the, the amount of revenue to be generating. But on an annual basis, the board would have, have the opportunity to change the levy in the district, uh, to meet the needs of the city at that time.
And there's no problem if we decided not to levy a millage rate one year for whatever reason or something. I mean, that doesn't make this go away.
No, you could, you could set the millage at zero.
You could do either.
Yeah.
I just wanted.
That's right. Hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah, please. Oh, uh, in addition, uh, just to further this discussion, if, um, you know, the, during the discussion at the last work session, uh, it was raised by members of the public um, to further research some possible alternate, uh, revenue generating solutions.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, one specifically being a blight tax, um, which we had, you know, looked at before, but looked in more detail this time and, um, Stephen will explain to you why, um, the blight tax, uh, mechanism is not really prudent uh, for the aim that we have here.
Thank you, Patrick.
So, yes, in fact, Georgia does have a provision of law that's colloquially, colloquially known as a blight tax. What it, uh, is officially known as, uh, is a redevelopment tax incentive program. And that official language kind of speaks better to what it really does, as well as why it is not a viable option for funding capital improvements. So, um, the, the Georgia law is actually in the Georgia Constitution. And this was adopted about twenty years ago as an amendment to the Constitution. It's in Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph Seven, Subparagraph D, authorizes an increased millage rate for blighted property. And again, it's an incentive program to eliminate blight, not a revenue program. So one of the main questions is what's a blighted property, uh, to which such a tax could be applied? And the property must be, uh, quote, endangerment to public health or safety. So think of a dilapidated building. Uh, it's definitely not a vacant lot or an underutilized commercial property. And it's not a district situation that the board or the city manager declares. It's a case by case basis, parcel by parcel. And essentially, the city has to initiate an action in municipal court where the property owner has to process and an opportunity to disprove that their property is blighted. So we would have to come in and show how it endangers the public health, uh, or safety. And, you know, so what goes into that? You'd have to pay the, um, our contract building official to inspect it, pay the city attorney to draw up a lawsuit, pay both those people to come to municipal court and prove the case. Then if we're successful, that single property, one at a time, would be added to the roster of blighted properties to which in additional millage would be applied, uh, each year as long as they're blighted. Again, it's an incentive program. So once a property is established to be blighted, it pays an extra tax. But, uh, the ordinance must establish a standard for which the property owner can prove that blight has been remediated on property. And that's the whole purpose of the program. So not only does the, if once that's, so, you know, typically that's done by demolishing the derelict building that made it a public safety problem in the first place. Once the owner proves that the blighted property, formerly blighted property is no longer blighted, not only does the additional millage come off, but we have to give them a discount on their property tax for a period of time, as like a reward for getting rid of their blight. Um.
Would blight, so. Would blight include properties with environmental issues?
It could. It, um, that could fall under the, um, detriment to public safety. Yeah, uh, that's, I saw, I looked at various jurisdictions in Georgia that have these ordinances. And at least one of them, I can't remember who, had said, you know, they put it as a designated superfund site, which is a pretty high standard. I mean, for most environmental problems are only ascertained by digging into the ground. Um, the superfund means that it's like the worst of the worst. So, you know, where would that threshold be? I'm not sure, but that, that is one of the ways to define blight. And. You know, we've, we've had, as the board knows, we've had discussions with, um, a, an eminent domain attorney regarding, um, you know, the, the, the potential for imminent domain as a response to economic development need. Um, that uh, statute, uh, has a definition of blights, uh, that is generally considered the definition of blight statewide and they, kind of the gold standard. And Stephen and I, uh, believe that really, uh, we, we think we only have a singular property that we could take through this process, right? Um, so that being said, um, there are other tools that are disposable to deal with that property that we believe could be taken through this process. And we're about to initiate those. Um, but this could be a potential, um, avenue for us to explore down the road, uh, for properties such as the one that I'm talking about. Um, but until then, it, it's not a viable solution.
So, come, so, I mean, is that, um, yeah. So I think this is the blight part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I had, so I had a question for you, that's pretty. Property by property, you got to prove that it's blighted. If they fix it, then it's no longer subject to them. And they get a discount. So.
And it's not appropriate for capital projects.
Right, it would be, it doesn't give you any certainty whatsoever.
Or does create revenue. This, it, it's a, this is.
Yes.
Okay. So about the SSD itself. Uh. SDS?
SSD, Special Services.
Wish to comment.
Yeah, I do have questions about that. Um, so, you, you know, I, I guess the fundamental question for me is, uh, you know, in creating this SSD and, uh, you know, increasing the millage in that part of town, uh, what is, what is the most specific to, you know, what are we raising?
Uh, capital projects within the boundary area.
We have specific capital.
Absolutely, and we, and we listed those in them.
So here's where I'm having trouble with this, is I looked at the capital project uh, for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, we have, uh, a lot of ones there, of things that are being done, uh, that are to be done. And every one of them has a funding source.
Mm-hmm.
We have, uh, an over or however we want to turn, uh, six hundred forty two thousand dollars in the capital fund.
Uh, that is the, 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 the amount of remaining funds that we anticipate having at the end of twenty five in the capital fund, if we did all of those projects. However, I would like to point out to you that the current budgets anticipated a three mil levy in the SSD, so that's built in.
That's built into this capital.
Correct.
My question is this, and this is where I'm really having, uh, trouble with it. Uh, when I first, uh, when, you know, this was first brought up in the, uh, strategic planning meeting, it sounded like a good idea. Um, where I'm having, uh, trouble now is, uh, on two fronts, on a couple of fronts. Uh, on one, I don't know that this is the right time to be doing some of this. Um, I really think that, uh, you know, after talking to a couple of business owners, I didn't talk to all of them, but I talked to a few business owners. Um, I believe that this would be really, uh, putting an additional burden on them. It is, uh, doing that. And I'm not sure that that's warranted at this time. Why? Because we have all of these other projects that are going to get done. You know, I'm not sure that I see, uh, why we couldn't put this off, uh, for it until some of these wind down. A second, uh, the second part of this that worries me is that, uh, you know, staff is, uh, is strained as it is with the number of projects that we have. So is the impact of adding additional projects, uh, funded by what we would be raising the millage in the, uh, SSD, is that going to require us to add additional to manage, uh, additional projects?
No, all of those projects that were identified as being able to be funded by revenue generated in the SSD are already contained in the capital program. There's, there's no additional projects that would be inserted into the capital program.
Now, this was the same list of projects that we had launched there as well.
No, that, that, it is, so there are some projects that carry over from year to year in the program. Uh, but the twenty four, twenty five program is different than the twenty three, twenty four programs. Is the twenty three, twenty four program contains projects that we've already.
That are, have been.
That's correct, yeah.
So let's tackle, well, let, let's talk about the, the first part of, uh, which is the greater part. Um, is the impact on small businesses. Uh, the reason that I'm concerned about that is because, uh, looking at, you know, uh, doing this, uh, to me, it says a couple of things. It says that, uh, one, you know, we may be, uh, inadvertently, I, I know that's not our hope, but we may be inadvertently pushing out smaller businesses, uh, making it, uh, you know, unpowerable or, you know, uh, uncomfortable for them to operate here. Uh, the second part of that is that if we do end up moving smaller businesses out, if the, if that is the impact of this, uh, the only businesses that, you know, will, will be somewhat larger and most likely, uh, you know, will start to have, uh, national chains. And myself, you know, uh, my, uh, and in my, my vision where we're going with, uh, downtown development, uh, has always been that we would, uh, nurture, we would encourage uh, small businesses to be in. So am I, am I incorrect in my understanding?
Well, I think, I think the question you need to ask yourself is, um, is the reward of generating enough revenue to do downtown capital projects to improve infrastructure in the district, then therefore allowing the district to grow and be sustainable, uh, greater or less than the risk that an additional tax burden might drive a business out of the community? I mean, that's, that's the question, right? And, and that, that's it in a nutshell. Now, to your point about chains, um, we can't prohibit that now. The only, the only place that we could prohibit that is on property that is controlled by either the city or DEA. So there's no, nothing stopping, you know, a chain from coming into our community now. Now, that being said.
We do have some zoning.
We have, we have zoning that, for example, makes it difficult for fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, traditional drive-throughs from low game. Now that we can do.
What Lionel's saying, you know, is that if you raise the cost of doing business here, it pushes out small businesses and makes it more viable for large corporations that can.
That's basically.
Spread that cost over a larger, whatever.
I think that, uh, that because I think the board has gone along by adopting the street bit, the street grid policy that we have if we're trying to implement in our downtown. And also, uh, by trying to improve the pedestrian natures of our downtown, so it becomes more walkable and more friendly towards small businesses as a result. And it does pay revenue to make those projects happen. We have, uh, disconnected streets at this point that we need revenue in order to make those connections, make it come together. So I think that there is, I, it, it is a balance. And it really resonated with me when, uh, some of the business owners say, hey, you're looking at disrupting that in the coming year with, uh, the two seventy eight projects. And maybe, uh, the coming year is not the year to actually levy the revenue. But I'm perfectly on board with the idea of moving forward with adopting the district. And it'll be up to a future board to decide, um, what to levy.
My, uh, what's at the top of my mind is, uh, keeping the small businesses here. Uh, folks have invested their time, their money, their sweat to, uh, building something here. Uh, if this is, uh, you know, the only way that, um, you know, we can do what it is we want to do downtown, uh, what I have to say is that, to me, it's the wrong time to be doing this. Uh, and second is that, uh, you know, I guess the question that. Or someone, uh, put it as to the balance of, uh, is it worth it? Um, at this point in time, I, I don't know, I don't believe that the juice is worth the squeeze.
Someone put forward the idea of, instead of three, one, Bill, what, what would one mill create?
Well.
Create a third of two hundred seventy five.
That's right, okay.
I did hope for the original ninety.
Smart ask. I mean. Yeah, and, and, and I want to caution y'all about discussing what the millage would be right now because that, that would be a future board's decision. Um, so I, you know, I want, I want everybody to try and focus on whether or not we move forward with the creation of the district itself.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I think, I think there's a couple of things, allow you said a couple of things, um, you know, first on the, on the, on the capital budget. Just so that everyone knows, there's not a single solitary project we've done in eight years that is equal to whatever's in these times. Until we engineer it, until it's designed, it's typically double the cost and sometimes it's been triple the cost. These are just placeholder numbers of what we think it might be if it someday happens. And what we spend on capital projects is money that we have. Uh, so these funding forces, uh, funding sources are flexible, they change, you know, um, the time. So, uh, I know last year we had residents have a lot of questions around the capital budget, and I just wanted to make sure that, that folks understood that. Um, as, as far as, I, I don't think anybody wants to, to put any pressure on small business owners. It'd be great if they didn't have to pay any of it. Um, I think what you're going to find regardless of whether you do an SSD or not is it is going to get more expensive for them to be here anyway, because at some point in time, property values are going to continue to increase, they have, to a certain extent. I believe firmly that they have it in the, in the central business district at the same rate as they have on the residential side. And I understand for business owners that have leases, um, you know, with, that pay triple net leases, that you're going to, you're responsible for those pass-throughs regardless of whether the taxes are through property value appreciation and or an SSD. Um, I like the SSD better because, um, personally, I think it forces any money raised from it to go specifically back into the district for infrastructure projects that helps those businesses long term um, versus having the ability to use it for general operating expenses that we, we need those too. Um, and so I think that is a benefit of it. I like the fact that it can be zero or three or five or ten or whatever, but it can be set specifically what needs to be for that year, and I think that board should be responsible for setting it based upon where they are at the midpoint of the year, the same way we've had to do every year when we set the millage rate uh, on, uh, for the tax ditches, you know, and so I do like that piece of it. I think if we want to continue to move Avondale forward specifically with this development with the central business district, which is going to include commercial, but also hopefully a decent amount of residential, um, we need to have avenues to continue to invest in that area. Um we need to have avenues to continue to invest in that area. We have massive smaller infrastructure issue. We've got massive, we've we've got streets that need to be bought. No, I haven't known any business owner currently in the central business district who we've approached about buying streets has given us a discount. In fact, even given us the chance to buy it, what it what the prop the assessed value is. Oh, it's typically eight to ten times more than that, you know. If we want to do that, if we want to take what was a red a red line district for a long period of time and make it something that feels like a community that. I think that our plan calls for. Um there's gonna have to be additional revenue sources. There just there just has to be.
No doubt, and you know, everything you've uh you've explained there, you know, makes a a compelling thing sport. Um I I agree. Uh I I'm still not saying that uh the risk of losing some of the folks who. Uh help build the downtown. It's, you know, it it's it's not. Uh that risk is not sitting well with me.
Yeah, it felt a little how real quick, can I reframe this issue? A little bit, just for the purposes of this discussion. So the downtown projects within the capital program have to be done. Um otherwise, we're we're negligent and potentially causing damage to property. Um. The question for you guys then is, how do we pay? Because we gotta do the projects, so how do we pay for it? And the only ways we have an opportunity to pay for these things are threefold, right? We can increase the general mileage and generate more revenue down. We can explore grants, grant opportunities and try and offset funding through through those, which we do all. Or three, we can create a special services. Those are pretty much our options. Um you know, you could theoretically, you could um. Free up more money in the operating budget to flip toward that, right? The 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 major expense in the operating budget is our bodies, right? Their salary positions are 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 compensation matters. So you can you can eliminate some positions. But if you eliminate positions and you run into the the problem of having enough people to do the work that you want to do, so so that's that's just the. That's the scenario.
Well, it's.
One was just saying slow down.
Right, that's basically it. Yeah, let's run some of this stuff down. Uh this isn't the best time to be raising. Raising taxes.
Well, and just again, the the budget, the budget currently as it's proposed today has a two hundred seventy five thousand. Proposed three mil on it. If we don't, then. In the budget, again, it's not actual, but then there would be no money going capital projects.
Well, we already have some money going.
No, not from not from the next year, because we've got what, two hundred seventy four thousand on the fund?
I think it's two twenty eight now. So if we, if if let's just say, I'll I'll give you all a thought experiment here. If if the mileage were levied at one mil instead of three, which would be the, you know, the two thirds reduction of the take. Then I think I Brittany and I ran those numbers, uh and the. The budgeted transfer to capital is somewhere in the forty to forty five thousand dollar range. Um the. Cap the capital program, the the dollars associated with the capital program assumes. That this coming at the end of, at the end of twenty four, there will be a, I mean, yeah, at the end of twenty four, there would be a two hundred fifty thousand dollar. Transfer made from the capital fund. Uh we believe if if the three mil SSD were created and. We had the normal amount of salary savings we do from transitions, we believe that we would be able to comfortably meet that. Number and transfer that amount, if not a little more into the capital fund and to fund those programs, but. That that's that's where we're we stand.
Yeah, and I would argue that if we're not putting ten percent of what we're collecting into. Capital fund transfers for future capital projects, we're falling behind.
And everything gets more expensive.
And everything gets more expensive.
So can I make?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um so, you know, I really love our indie businesses. I'm on the DDA and I enjoy that little loft. And I try to support them as much as possible from my own with my own patronage. But and this is gonna sound a little cold and I don't mean it to be cold. But the fact of the matter is, not every business will survive forever. That doesn't happen in the caterer. It doesn't happen anywhere. Businesses come and go. And so as much as I love our businesses, I don't know that I in any way can guarantee. That somebody's gonna be here forever. I mean, I I tend to look at my role as with a wider view, more comprehensive view. In the fact that what we need is a resilient income cap. And a resilient downtown is one that handles stormwater. It has transportation infrastructure, it has parking infrastructure. Why do I say resilient? Because what we need is a place that can continue into the future. To keep attracting businesses as we move forward. Not every business is gonna make it. But what we want is during economic ups and downs, we want a place where businesses want to be. Um you know, I really believe that all of these investments that we are making or in our capital plan. Um will pay off in the years to come and that they will create a synergistic energy. And attract residents as well as new businesses that will feed off of each other and create more opportunities, more foot traffic. For even for the businesses that we have now. And it's not just me saying this. Studies have shown over and over again, if you invest in infrastructure. It helps everyone. This is smart growth that we've all run on. I want to make a distinction between property owners and businesses, because what we're talking about here. And I know rents will go up, I'll get to that in a second. What we're talking about is a tax, a small tax on property. Existing property owners here will eventually realize a pretty substantial profit from their investment as our downtown improves. But what about people who run small businesses who also own property? Or the people who are running small businesses and have to pay possibly a somewhat increased lease? Well, being on the DDA does give me a little bit of insight into part of this that maybe some others don't have. So we've already, we've seen the list of physical projects on the capital plan, uh which I believe will benefit our businesses. But let me add a few more things that happened in Avenue. The DDA, our our downtown development board is also our main street. And this Main Street Board allows us to offer some goodies to incentive businesses. But it also requires to be a Main Street Board, requires a lot of staff to just to remain in good standing. With that every year to allow us to do those things. Some of the things that the DDA and Main Street Board can offer are low interest loans and facade grants. Rural and opportunities that zone tax credits. Free marketing promotions to businesses, a quarterly business newsletter, events. Um you know, we just had a discussion in the DDA about adding not one, but two. Events in the spring, in addition to what we already have on our schedule. One in person and one online to bring this into businesses. And we're all happy to do this, we want to do this for businesses. The DDA is working on and sometimes funding parking solution. And trying very hard to keep parking free in Avenue versus other cities. And what about the DDA and the Main Street Boards themselves? Many cities have to fund these groups with an additional tax on their downtown families. We don't have to do it. It's free right now. So I just think, you know, all of these teams take a lot of time and money. And I think it's important for us all to realize that they primarily benefit from small indie businesses. Not the owners of big empty parcels or lighted properties. These are things that we are doing constructive, positive things that we're doing to help our small businesses. Um you know, I agree, I don't want to impose a tax that would be a hardship. I tend to agree with Dee, but I would like to uh. You know, maybe take a look at the two seventy eight project when we get to establishing the mileage and making sure we consider that. You know, but nothing is perfectly fair, and even while we're doing our best to get downtown. Properties properly evaluated, this is one way to ensure that those who are paying too little now. I'm not talking about small indie businesses, will contribute a bit more. Um I just, I really feel this is, this is the route to go. In terms of the needs that we have in our downtown and. The funds that we are already putting toward helping our small businesses.
Right, so yeah, I mean, and what you said there makes sense, um and in light of what you said there. Maybe uh what we need to do is uh prioritize the infrastructure uh projects uh. That we have here. Um we have them listed as infrastructure, uh transportation, parks and green space, et cetera. Uh from what he said, uh it sounds like infrastructure should have the priority. And you know, that sort of make that makes sense to me, uh stormwater. Uh yeah, that definitely makes sense. Maybe we need to uh put a focus on that. For the next, uh I don't know, however many years, and uh some of these things deprioritize them. Uh and uh bring them on when it makes uh more sense. Right now, uh for me, uh I do have uh, you know, as everyone's heard, I do have uh concerns about the idea. Of uh doing this right now. I think uh it would make better sense. To let uh some of the things that we have uh going on wind down. And then uh we'll probably be in a better economic environment uh. To decrease the impact to the small businesses. That's my view.
Well, as I say it tonight, we're only being asked to create two.
It's just whether to establish it or not, when the mileage rate decision comes later. So um alright, everybody good? We we are not voting on this.
Um anything to add? No, so I except for the fact that. I I'm assuming the board would want staff to bring this forward to a regular meeting.
Yes. Patrick, it might be helpful to uh pull out some of those infrastructure projects though that we are specifically looking. And go ahead and just have a list of those that we.
Yes, and I I do believe we've got that on the website with the projects associated in the presentation that we gave. Yeah.
Alright, next item of discussion of the work session, uh occupational tax will be the discussion, Mr. Manager.
Yes, so all you, yes, um. The 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 occupational tax process. Uh that the city has used for a long time, no longer it works for us or our businesses. Um the reason being is that uh the formula uh that is assigned. Uh to um a business in order to calculate what their occupational tax owed per year is. Uh is too complex, and it's too complex because the the city had previously adopted using SIC codes. S I C uh codes to determine the category upon which a business falls. Uh and there are dozens and dozens of SIC codes applied to um types or categories of businesses throughout the city. Uh a lot of businesses don't know which SIC code they actually fall under because they're they're oddly. Vague and specific at the same time. Uh so uh we are proposing simplifying the process and making it easier to apply for. And calculate your occupational tax due every year. Uh by uh changing uh the formula uh association to those SIC codes to um um. That's right, NACs codes, uh which are fewer in in category. Um and so uh by doing that, it just makes the process go far more smoothly. Uh it will expedite the process, especially as we move it online. Um it will, you you know. Uh take less time for the businesses themselves to go through the process and take less time for us to process those. Those payments, because uh if the board recalls, the occupational tax is due on an annual basis. And that, once that tax is paid, then the city issues the business license for the coming year. Um so uh that's all, that's all this is. However, it's the the previous formulas are in an ordinance, so we have to amend the ordinance in order to. Uh change the formula to then from SIC to NACs. Uh so uh in order for that to be applicable in twenty twenty four. And of course, we we go through the business license process in the first quarter of the year, then we need to amend that ordinance during. Uh the calendar year twenty twenty three, so we're trying to get that process started right now, so that on December the twentieth, that will come. Uh back to the board for consideration.
Are the proposed rates the same as what they were before?
Uh well, they they, since there were dozens and dozens of rates last time, so you know, associated specifically with a SIC code. We what we've done is during that consolidation period um. Also consolidated the various rates associated with those old SIC codes into the NACs code. So most of them are very, very, very similar, but there's gonna be slight adjustments to some categories just based on consolidation. Uh but this won't, none of the formulas will change in a manner to uh materially impact. Anybody's occupational tax due.
These definitions are a lot better.
Yeah.
And is there. I mean, it's really the responsibility of the business to define itself?
Yes. The business defines itself.
So if I start a mining company, are you gonna be suspicious?
Well, I mean, it we we can always verify or audit any specific business. Who might be committing fraud, but hopefully it won't come to that, right?
So is there a, is there a process that a business owner should go through that is material to? Um contest the increase because of the change from S I C to N A N A S E S?
Uh we haven't contemplated that because we don't think that there is a chance. Um well, I I mean, the question then becomes, has that business been incorrectly classified? For a long time and been paying too much or too little? Uh you know, it it it's tough to legislate that. Uh well, I I mean, I just, I don't think we need to legislate it. I think we can, I think we can, we can handle that as a staff. Um again, this is not, we are not trying to to um make anything more complicated, we're trying to simplify here. Yeah.
There is not really that one.
No, not at all. No, this is literally just for convenience of the process.
Part of our ongoing to to clean things up and make it more.
Efficient.
Yes. So. So what is next on that? We would adopt that or?
So 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 we will bring an uh an ordinance to the board and go through multiple readings unless the board. Consent it to unanimously consider at the next meeting, so just the normal ordinance process.
But we gotta do it in twenty twenty three.
Yes, if we want the new process to apply in twenty twenty four. We have two more meetings.
Okay, so we did the first reading the thirteenth, the second twenty is if it's required.
That's that's right.
Everybody came to that.
Yeah.
So it 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 might make uh, it might make a little bit uh more sense uh to folks to put how the whole trade in context. Meaning uh how would a business person calculate their taxes on them?
Yeah, so that's all, that'll all be in the ordinance language, which it currently is. We, you know, we just have. The way to calculate is in the ordinance.
Right.
Uh and within, we also put that in a letter to businesses every year. Uh so that won't change. The only thing that changes is literally the category. Yeah.
Alright, I'll get on that one. Okay. Uh again, there'll be two readings on that. First reading, next meeting, second reading, we'll vote on it. Alright, uh discussion of board appointments.
Yes, so um as we are wanting to do on an annual basis, um we need to figure out. Or you guys need to figure out how you want to handle um potential board appointments. We will have two meetings left this year. Uh in which to do that unless y'all schedule a special called meeting for any other purpose. Um keep in mind, although we aim to have all appointments made by the end of the year. So that terms begin in January. so that terms begin in January, it is not necessary. Terms will roll over until addressed. Um, now, I'm sure y'all would like to get this done as soon as humanly possible. Uh, so, um, my proposal to you guys would be, if you want, um, to do interviews during the work session on the thirteenth and make appointments at the regular twentieth. Unless y'all feel like you wanna break out the interviews in a separate meeting.
Is this for the Green Space Ad hoc Committee?
This is for every single board. Um, well, that, I, I don't know that answer yet. Um, I think I, I, I will provide you with that information via email. Um, but, uh, we do have, um, you know, positions on the DDA. We have a vacancy to fill on the P Z A B. Um, we, um, I think we have some, some resignation on the HPC. Um, we will have, uh, you know, the Green Space Advisory Committee. Um, and then, uh, I believe, I believe we have one spot on the ethics.
Oh, wow, and we have applications.
Oh, yes, and y'all should have all of those. We've been disseminating them as the game.
To the open positions, who the incumbents were. It's very helpful. As well as attention.
Yeah, cuz I don't.
Resumes.
I don't think we've gotten any resumes.
Yeah, we just approved the Green Space Ad hoc, so I don't know if we've even, have we?
Just on that, yeah. I think if it goes in the next year, Dean, I will be fine with that.
Alright, we still. Uh, yes, if we could get, that would be helpful and maybe speed things up a little bit, but, okay. Everybody agree with that game plan? Okay, sorry. Anything to add?
No.
Okay, alright, last item of public comment. Yo. Sorry. Yes, Dan.
Say, of it. Um, I'm grateful to Commissioner Shor-Tel for providing more context for the way that the city has invested already, small businesses. Um, I'm also aware of it since twenty twenty-two, property taxes for residents' revenue has gone up by a million dollars. And I think that, um, some of that money has gone towards investment in the business area. Um, our staff has certainly got to pay a city visiting in the business area. Um, I love the businesses. I'm glad they're there. Um, so it's not about that, but I do think that it's good to go to get the facts that the past business subsequent investment by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Stacia.
Uh, so Stacia, owner of the lost spirit on twenty-eight sixty-six Washington Street. Um, I don't think anybody would contest that infrastructure needs to be built. Speaking for myself, and I think several other business owners, I wish that there was a more fair way of looking at this. Because when we think of the acreage within Avondale State, and I pulled up the map on Google, roughly two-thirds of the city is residential. Probably. And what we're saying is we're gonna target just a third of the acreage and ask them to pay even more than what everybody else. Which, just on, on the face of it, seems unfair to me, because we all rise and fall as soon together. Right, so maybe some residents don't ever come into the downtown, and that's their prerogative. But with a vibrant downtown, they also prosper because they're proud of it also.
Absolutely.
So, I, it doesn't seem like there's been real consideration of what about just a half mill across the board to Ollie? Or a mill increase across the board? Where I'm, I imagine you would raise more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand if you're targeting. And it would seem more equitable, and it can also help those businesses who are just trying to stay alive to not have to be overly burdened with a, a significant increase of the middle grade for those first. I know one of my parcels was shown last time, oh, it's just eighteen hundred dollars condition according to the year. That's a lot of money to use. That's not a consequence. So I really, I know you're saying, oh, we're just gonna create the district now, the decision will be made later. But that's not really what's there. I mean, I'm pretty sure we can all agree, because he's already put in the people. In their mind, a three-mill increase for the, the capital budget. You see the goal of my wall, and I'm asking this once again, let's be more empathic about this.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, Nick Hurry, uh, well, heaven, I'm, uh, David Priest. Um, also forty-two Clarence in the neighborhood, so I come in from both sides. Um, I completely agree with Stacia on this. Um, the reason is, I think it's pretty simple. I don't understand all the tax stuff and how everything works, but the downtown is an amenity that's, that's benefits the whole community. I think if this was something about the lake and you were asking business owners to help out with that, their, their property owners in the business district, then that might be unfair. But in the case here of Stacia's request to consider something about a whole city, and I as a property owner, I'm a neighbor's age, would be affected by that, that seems right to me, because the business district is an amenity for the whole community, whole neighborhood. And so why wouldn't those important infrastructure do this be something that we will all share? So I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable approach. I think in most cases, we all, we've talked about it, a couple reasons, any of the businesses are not flush, you know, to off in downtown Avondale. And I think it put a lot of less sweat tears to a lot of the great women the city has, and you guys have done a terrible job on helping bring about the deals, some of our side of what was going, but I think the smaller businesses actually could feel this in pockets in meaningful way. Um, have, have been the years, you know, getting ahead and making this happen. So, this feels a little immediate. Why would we, why would we do this particular thing? So, by the way, terms are updated. You think you get, it kind of looks like we need to be, but if half mill across the whole area would issue four hundred, uh, to Brian's point, you're gonna need it.
I think a mill is three hundred and thirty thousand.
Um, well.
We go through that every June.
It, yeah, it'll be four hundred thousand now.
Yeah.
And so half would be two. Two hundred. But, good points. Yes, thank you.
Marty.
Marty Mees, uh, Low Tree Arts Studios in the Central Business District, and I also am a resident in the Central Business District. So I'm just curious why, you know, they, like residential, um, areas did not get part now. By definition, I say, you know, property versus residential. Because, you know, I, I live here too, so now I'm not only gonna realize an additional tax burden for my business, but also
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I don't know how to, so yeah.
Philosophically, the answer to that question is the infrastructure benefits proper, it's not about businesses. It's about properties in an area. So the infrastructure that would be funded through any potential revenue generation within that boundary, it doesn't matter i- if it's commercial or personal. That, that's not the distinction. The distinction is the area, not the type of property. Different, that makes sense.
Well, you know that any of that additional revenue has to be spent in the district, so. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
It's sort of the heels of what Nick said, you know, we've owned our building at Little Tree since nineteen ninety-eight, paying taxes. Last year, our tax burden has went from twenty-five thousand dollars to almost sixty thousand dollars. Now we're talking about an, an additional mill on top of that, so I don't know what the math is, but that's more. Um, but I can guarantee you since nineteen ninety-eight, our tax dollars, uh, they've, they've gone to fund stuff over the residential side, so we've shared that for many, many years.
Okay. Uh, well, it's, mostly about yours. You know, love?
Yes.
Okay.
John, you're on.
Hey, good evening. You know, I, after listening to a handful of these comments, I, I think, um, I think one thing sort of resonates. I think it's timing. You know, I, I like the notion that downtown pays for its own additional expenses, you know, in additional infrastructure, additional costs, additional additional expenses to cover the, the operation of a downtown district makes sense. SSD does that. I think there's no, no, no arguing that. But the timing of it just seems weird. And the problem that I'm seeing is that the, the SSD penalizes exactly those who've done who've done what we're asking for, done what we're striving to achieve, and that's investing downtown. Um, you know, they've improved the properties, they've invested in the businesses, which attracts people to come and enjoy Avondale States. But that improvement, that property value increase is the hardest hit by millage increase. So, you know, the unfortunate side effect of all that is that it double dips on those that are already committing to help grow and improve, so. You know, uh, there's gotta be additional ways to, to find that money for the initial investment, for the initial infrastructure costs. You know, the ongoing, sure, bring that in a S S D situation. Um, but, uh, tax credits, grants, one-time versus ongoing expenses. I think there's more to be investigated here. I don't think we're, I don't think we're all, all the way settled here.
Thank you. And, um, you could really do that. Okay. Alright, thank you, John. Alright, any other comments? But we'll see, you know, uh, thank you all for being here today. Appreciate it.